Be back here on the record.
Okay.
Wilson, we don't have a agenda item to select a water attorney.
So you would, you, um, let me, let me look at the agenda. So you, you can give staff direction without an agenda. You would, the appointment of a, of the town attorney at the next meeting would, would need to be noticed by, uh, on the agenda. But you can give direction coming out of the, um, of the exact session to say, you know, we, we, we want you to reach out to this person and, 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 you know, move forward in the process that way.
Do we need a motion and a vote?
Or just direction?
Just direction.
Um, I think. Let me think about this for a second. I'm, I, I, I'm leaning towards you. You don't necessarily need to vote, but on, on the other hand, I do think it's critical that there's at least a straw poll vote to, that, you know, all the board is in agreement with the direction.
Census of the majority.
Yeah, you don't need, I, you know, I would say you, you don't need a formal vote with a motion in a second, but just, you know, at, 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 at least a, 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 a simple voice vote to make sure everyone's on the same page, you know, straw poll.
Okay. So maybe not about emotion. If everybody's okay with that.
I got a motion. You want to make a motion?
We don't.
If you want to make a motion.
I think what I did is we should get back to the.
Well, we're going to get back to them, but we're, we can give directions to staff to do that for us and then make the motion and hire him at the next meeting very soon as possible, whatever you want. Okay. So I, I.
Did we say Angie's going to get back?
We're all in agreement. Well, Wilson is, uh, staff is gonna reach out to never stack and Wambacher and negotiate and discuss the contract or the process of bringing them on for the town of Culver as the water attorney.
Okay. I can work with, um, Dusty on that.
You ought to consensus vote?
Yeah, does, yeah, just making sure everyone agrees. It's, it sounds like you've already done that, but I'm just making sure.
Always good to be sure. Um, trustee Benzo's. trustee Lincoln Black.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yeah.
Trustee Staub. Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're not going into, uh, we can go into the town attorney updates.
So.
Do you want to discuss the Optimus? Are you giving us the update or?
Right. Yeah, I think, um, I, I wanted to address that briefly. Um, so since we're not having the discussion in exact session, I won't go into detail on any of the legal claims, um, and all of that was, was addressed in, in, in my memo. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just say, you know, in response to the town's last settlement offer, we received a, you know, a rejection from, uh, Mr. Meowon with Optimus. Um, it wasn't really clear from his rejection, you know, what he would consider to be acceptable terms. Um, other than all, you know, he had initially, as I kind of addressed in the memo, he had initially claimed, and I believe he said this in an open meeting, so I can discuss it here, that, you know, he felt that he was owed a full refund for all of the rent that was ever paid for his, his site at Gandy Park. Um, and also felt that, you know, he was owed some money from the town. Or he was owed some money for damage to Optimus' cable facilities, which he claims is, is the fault of the town. And, you know, all, all I'll say here is there's, there's really no legal basis to, to those claims. Um, I, I believe he had requested to be on the agenda for, uh, this month's meeting. And because we were going to have the executive session, we, uh, had put him on the agenda for, for next month's meeting. So the board could ideally give direction on, you know, how, how they wanted to respond to his sort of rejection of the, of the settlement offer. But he'll, he'll be back at the, at the next meeting and, and, and maybe he can give more insight on what he would consider to be a fair settlement. Um, and if you have any, uh, uh, you know, suggestions on how else we might try to resolve the dispute with him. I, I, I am all, all ears here in terms of, you know, how the board would like to, um, address this issue since he hasn't really made clear what his issue was with the town settlement proposal.
All of a sudden you went silent.
Sorry, did I, I, um, maybe?
You, you muted at the very last couple of sentences.
Okay, I'm s- I'm sorry about that. I, um, uh, wasn't sure where, where I cut out there. Um, I guess just to say, you know, Mark didn't make clear exactly what his issue was with the town settlement or what he would consider to be a fair settlement. Maybe he'll come and, and give you that information at the next meeting. But, you know, my recommendation would be that the, the town's prior settlement proposal is, is more than fair under the circumstances. And, uh, you know, if he's not willing to accept that, then I, I'm not really sure for our hat.
Okay.
And then, sorry, I forgot that was, I'm, uh, it's still me. Um, so in, in, since I know it's late and everyone's getting a little, um, tired, I, I think the, the firm's withdrawal letter speaks for itself. I'm happy to answer any questions. But I think other than that, I'll just end my updates so we can move on with the rest of the agenda.
I did have a question. Should we ask the staff to ask Mark what his expectations are or what he wants from the town when he comes on to the agenda?
Um, that's a good idea. I, I mean, if, yeah, if he is going to be on the agenda for, for next month's meeting, you know, certainly giving him some direction that the board would, you know, prefer to hear what he thinks would be a, an acceptable settlement here. And then, you know, a, a, at that point, um, you know, our firm will, will have withdrawn. But i- if you appoint a new town attorney, then you can, you know, discuss that settlement with the, with the new town attorney.
Thank you. Okay, staff updates?
I'm just wondering if you wanted to get into the, the remaining items on the consent agenda. Uh, before we continue with the, the rest of the, um, the, the end of the meeting here. Would the board be amenable to addressing that, the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Yeah, yes, I would, definitely. Anybody opposed to going back to the?
I am.
All right.
Yeah.
You're okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate that. We've got, we need paid and bank resolution that we updated that were in, uh, so I think we'd be deeply appreciated if you would go back and consider those items one by one.
Okay. All right. Um, so there's the.
I believe it was items, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, um, but I believe the items that were not either tabled or deleted, um, were items B, C, D, E, K, and N.
Which, I think O two. I think O two.
Thank you.
To address the bank signatures.
B, C, D, E?
B, C, D, E, H. K. So, and, and, and also that was, oh, no, that was.
You didn't already do M and O, sorry.
No, no, those are. And then we considered.
Yeah. We'll start with, uh, B, the February fourth, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees Meeting, Meeting Minutes.
These just need to be approved. So if anyone can make a motion to approve unless there are specific items that need to be made.
The word from spelt wrong, but I don't want to hear that.
Okay. Yeah. I, I would make a motion that we approve the February fourth, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes.
We approved April nine. We discussed April nine.
We're going back to.
Going back to the consent agenda because the rest of the board voted now. Individually.
The ones that are.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Which one did you say?
B, thirty fourth, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes.
Can I amend the motion to approve February fourth, twenty twenty five, March fourth, twenty twenty five, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, March first, twenty?
April.
I'm sorry, April first, twenty twenty five, Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, all in one motion.
You didn't know the name?
They were already approved. It was already kicked off for discussion.
Very.
Very confusing.
Well, with that amended, I'll, I'll.
I second as, as amended.
Okay, any further discussion? Maybe have a vote, please?
Trustee Stalin.
Yes.
Trustee Bevill.
Yes.
Trustee Mizelw.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Was there somebody that? Okay. So we go to, uh, H. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven, zero zero seven, a resolution of the town of Culver, authorizing and removing banking signature.
This basically just takes me and, and Carla off the bank accounts and makes Dusty primary on those bank accounts. Um, as far as staff goes. A motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty five dash year zero seven, a resolution of the town Culver operating and removing bank, banking signatories.
A motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, maybe we have a vote?
Trustee Bevill.
Yes.
Trustee Stalin.
Yeah.
Trustee Lincoln Black.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Let me think about it.
Okay. Then we will drop down, down to item K. Approval of annual renewal of work-based learning program agreement between Culver and the town of Culver.
There's one, uh, thing to note here in the very, at the very end of this agreement. They name an executive director who, who, under my understanding, it's come to my understanding that that person is no longer the executive director. Um, so if we just, if the board would like to approve this, um, in lieu of that person's name being there, and just replace that with the title only, that would be ideal.
Why don't we approve the annual work-based learning program agreement between Culver and the town of Culver?
A second.
With the, uh, executive, the current or executive director? So. A motion in a second? And no further discussion, no vote?
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Bevill.
Yeah.
Trustee Stalin.
Yeah.
Trustee Lincoln Black.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes. Right? Item L, approval of contract between the town of Culver and Distal Consulting LLC in a, not to exceed the amount of five hundred and thirty four dollar or thirty dollars for grant and project assistance for the auditorium and Broadbent Projects. No further discussion or? Yeah, make a motion.
No, I move that we, I make a motion that we approve the contract between the town of Culver and Distal Consultants LLC, not to exceed the amount of five hundred and thirty dollars for grant and project assistance for the auditorium and Broadbent Projects.
You have a second?
Not a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, maybe we have a vote?
Trustee Mizelw.
Yes.
Trustee Bevill.
No.
Trustee Price.
No.
Um, Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Mayor, or trustee Stoll.
Yes.
Let me think about this.
Okay. Well, see, N.
N and O go together. They're complementary.
Just to, both, can't you just approve both one and, or N and O?
N and O.
Yep. Together.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can take a motion to that effect.
Side. Motion to approve the change, change order number, what that's, that's professionals with the amount of four thousand five hundred ninety one fifty seven additional to, maybe, and we'll bring that up. Put approval of this chart order, change order. The final and revised contract now, but the professionals is four hundred and fifty eight thousand five nine hundred and forty nine dollars and thirty seven cents. And all approval of change, change order number four to contract with the assistant engineer here for the Culver and on tour in the month remodel deducting four thousand five hundred ninety one dollars and thirty cents from contract sum to fund additional asbestos a big cost. Upon approval of this order, this change order, you buy contract now with assistant engineer will be one million six hundred and six thousand eight hundred and four dollars and twenty two.
I said. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, maybe we have a vote?
Trustee Price?
Yes.
Trustee Stalin.
Yes.
Trustee Bevill.
Yes.
Trustee Mizelw.
Yes.
Mayor Wil.
Yes.
Motion to have a demand.
All right.
I just want to make sure housekeeping wise that I do believe that item P for the approval of the, the town attorney RFP was approved. But Dusty, can you confirm that for me? Because my microphone, uh, the audio is not, not great on my end.
I definitely, um, dealt with that one. I don't know, no vote or motion on my notes anymore.
I may have reserved that to, to later on to discuss around the time of the thirty day notice to withdraw. I think. So we might want to address item P as well.
Yeah, I, I have the approval of the request for the proposal RFP to pre- procure the services of a town attorney. We need, we need to, um.
I, I guess, you know, what I, you know, we, let me, let me just got here that we have, uh, for the staff eight updates, got town attorney update, thirty day notice and drop town attorney. We haven't discussed that.
He did.
He, he did.
He said he let himself it off.
Well, you want to take it off?
No, he says his letter says it all.
Yeah. Instead of a self-explanatory.
Okay, he said it was self-explanatory and didn't need to.
He said one, I didn't.
When Wilson was speaking, he gave his town attorney update with Optimus, and then he said as far as the letter, it's self-explanatory.
I'm still happy to answer questions about it, but I was just trying to move things along quickly since I already provided the board with a written notice, um, and didn't want to take up additional time reiterating it since it was sent to, I believe it was included in the packet or sent separately. Is that correct, Angie?
That is correct. It was included in the packet.
I really didn't understand what he said. It's all broken.
That's the letter was in the packet. I motion, we approve a request for proposal to procure. I'm going to stop right there because I'm going to ask that we advertise in the Daily Sentinel and with Listserve through CML so that we can get, have a chance of maybe pulling from local people and, um, and just get out there to more, more law firms.
Along with the bid net.
Yeah, sure. The more, the better. And, and there's also another one, um, is it Indeed? There's a, there's like a website that's like the biggest used website.
You say it's indeed.com?
Yeah. Yeah. I'd love to see it go out to more than, um, so I would motion for an approval of a request for proposal RFP to procure the services of town attorney posting the position at BidNet and the Daily Sentinel and indeed.com and also allowing people to mail in a physical bid and an email bid, not requiring them to go through BidNet only. I'd like to, I'd like to add here that having this posted in multiple places like that, while that may be, um, good for the recruitment process, I do think that you are limited on the staff that you have at this point, and you're coming up upon, uh, even more limited, uh, staffing situation. And I think that it may be unrealistic to have your singular staff person uh, actively posting on like four or five different sites for an RFP, for a town attorney. Um, and BidNet is the legal posting place, and that's where municipal attorneys look for work typically. Or by word of mouth. Um, CML Listserve is a huge one. All the attorneys. Certainly is. It certainly is, and you can request that of your staff. I just want you to understand the real, the realistic capacity of your staff to do that in addition to everything else that they're expected to do, maybe a little bit difficult or impossible. To which.
Well, what, what, what can we do to assist our limited staff?
Maybe there's a volunteer that would be willing to post this stuff. Okay, I will amend my motion to ask that this be posted, okay? Approval of request for proposal RFP to procure the services of town attorney requesting that it also be posted in in the Daily Sentinel, the CML List, Listserve and BidNet and allow interested parties to submit an application via mail or email as well as BidNet.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Further discussion? There we have it. Vote?
Yes. Trustee Stalin.
Yeah.
Trustee Mizelw.
No.
Trustee Bevill.
Yeah.
Mayor Wil.
Yes.
Motion to have a.
My question, are we not even going to discuss this resignation?
At all? He doesn't want to. He says it's in the letter.
I know it's in the letter, but I, I mean, he, didn't he say he had asked for any questions?
Well.
Will, will, uh, will, uh, will him to answer any questions?
Certainly. What are your questions?
Well, uh, and looking at your letter, I was kind of highlighting that we've been, I'm able to, uh, establish full and functional working relationship with the town, uh, most notably inconsistent and unclear direction from the board of trustees. So I, I guess I'm, you know, I'm really just kind of disappointed because I think you've done, you've done a great service for us and I'm really disappointed that you're going to resign. But I, I guess I, so my question is, is what, what, what can we do to possibly rectify these issues that you've identified? So that, you know, we could continue to have your representation. Uh, I mean, are, are any specifics you said in addition has come to our attention that an individual trustee had sought and relied upon advice of their own independent outside legal counsel, which is inconsistent with advice for your counsel? Um, uh, the professional relationship between legal counsel and client requires mutual trust, clear communication and a level of comfortability. I guess I think going into this, I would have, I would have hoped that if we saw this coming down, that you kind of give us some feedback like, hey, pull your heads out and, and, uh, here's my concerns about, you know, what it takes for me to represent you and what we're doing to, to make that a better relationship.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the, the very first meeting I, you know, attended with the board was, uh, was, you know, kind of meant to be a training to facilitate, you know, cooperation amongst the board. And, you know, you brought in a, a, a professional facilitator to do that, who I thought was, you know, more, more than qualified and, and, and did an excellent job, frankly. And, you know, I just, there, there really hasn't been any im- improvement in the cooperation between the board since then. If anything, it's gotten worse over time. Um, I mean, in terms of things, you know, to improve, I, I think at last month's meeting, you know, Dana from, uh, uh, who came in and gave the training from Dola and spoke, you know, really kind of hit the nail on the head in terms of the issues with the board, just, you know, not, not being able to get along. I, you know, the, uh, issues at, at the beginning of the meeting with regard to the consent agenda, you know, just the, 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 the confusion uh, between the board members. Um, you know, pull. Um, you know, pu- pulling things out, out of consent agenda that are really. Uh, non, you know, non controversial issues and and so. Uh. I, I, you know, I just felt o- over the time representing the town that. You know, my, my, my legal advice is not, it, it is not really getting through to the board. I mean, we, we're supposed to have an executive session tonight to discuss. You know, the, the issues with Optimus Communication, my, my legal opinions on that, it seems pretty clear the board. Uh didn't have any interest in, in, in hearing what I had to say about uh, uh. You know, the claims raised by, by Mr. Regal, and I, I, I know you have said that you read the memo and felt that. That spoke for it, but you know, it would have still been good to get the boards. You know, input on, 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 on how to proceed, especially because Mr. Mialan is. You know, been, been very difficult to deal with and is, you know, inconsistent, has, has misrepresented things to the town and. You know, I, I, I just felt my, my advice has not really been, been listened to in, in that and, and many other matters and so. It's not, you know, I'm not, I'm not withdrawing because I'm personally insulted by that or anything, but it's, you know, the town deserves an attorney that you, that the entire board can, can place their trust in. And it's clear that hasn't been me and I hope you're able to find. Counsel that, that you actually trust so that, you know, individual trustees don't have to go out and. And consult their own personal attorneys when they, when they don't like the. Uh advice or input that is coming from, from the town attorney, so that's, that's why we're withdrawing.
Well. I, I felt like I got your gist from a- about Optimus Communications and Mark has mentioned. Multiple times about, you know. He talked about pulling the plug, I mean, I have his services, but. That's his decision as a, as a business owner, business operator, whatever, if he wants to pull the plug, he can pull the plug, but. I personally was, was hearing me loud and clear, so I just want to know or understand that. I, I respect your opinions and whatnot on, on that.
And thank you for being a returning, thank you for always being professional.
Thank you all.
We appreciate it, I do.
It, it definitely has been a, a learning process. For me and I, uh, the first to admit that I've been a bit slow at it um. So. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you for responding, I appreciate that. Very disappointing, I mean, I really appreciate everything you've done for me.
Okay, now someone correct me, I believe. We've been jumping around the agenda quite a bit, but I believe. There's still items twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four to resolve before adjournment, or do I have that?
That, that's correct, you're correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, s- staff updates um. Intermit, interim town administrator professional services contract expires on Friday, May ninth. Twenty twenty-five. And um. Incident reports from Mesa County Sheriff. Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, sorry, everything. Everything froze for like thirty seconds on my end. Um, so, you know, my contract does end on May ninth, I did send you all an email with a, you know, a status report. And some recommendations, um, there was a proposal there and I'm, I'm just, did any of you, were any of you able to see that?
And Angie, I'm not sure they did. I printed everything out, so I'll just ask you to take one and pass it on. Um, these are items that were provided this afternoon, kind of as part of this closeout. Um, so the first item that you're getting is um, a, a budget to actual comparison for the end of the year. With some updates to the fund balance. Um, the second document that's going around is where we stand um as of April thirtieth. Now, that is a little more preliminary, there's a few more in the, in a month adjustments to make, but that will give you where you. Stand financially um as of right now. Um, then the next item is the um, the. Is the uh update on auditorium, the cost. And again, those all.
I'm sorry, do you have more of these? We're missing two. Did you take more?
I don't think so.
This one. The fourth thirty, I have the last. Here's one more. You guys can go that one.
Yeah, there's those two, there's one with that and then one without. So there's one with a grin on the front and one without.
Those are three handouts?
There's three so far, and then handing out. So this is um Angie's status report. And um her closeout report. And then um. This is the cover email that came out with it today.
I think that the, the board and the organization is facing some pretty serious, you know, structural. Issues with the, the staffing, um and I've outlined those pretty de- in a pretty detailed fashion on a, but, uh, well, on a high level. So that uh hopefully it's easy to absorb. Uh, the, the status report is. You know, uh, six or nine pages long and that one page email is just a supplement to. Provide you with an alternative that it doesn't involve the current path of sort of imminent demise that the organization is on. Um. So, you know, the board, I, I strongly urge the board to address the staffing issue immediately. Um, it's unrealistic to expect. Ms. Koella to do everything. That's not appropriate for separation of duties and it's physically impossible. For her to do that, um, she, you know, doesn't frankly have the training. To do all three different positions, the three different positions are complimentary positions. Um. You know, and I think it's all outlined pretty well in my status report. So, you know, what the board chooses to do as a next step is really up to you. Um, and I've, I've provided an alternative to the, the path that you're on for some uh further temporary support between myself. Uh Ms. Distel and Dusty. But again, it's up to the board as to whether or not you can come to a consensus, work together. Um, you know. To try to put you on a better path.
Well, I was gonna ask if we could have, schedule a, s- schedule a work session and a special meeting. And um possibly suggest hiring a um, from a temp agency. Somebody, one of the hugest complaints right now is nobody's here for regular hours um. Well, we thought Angie was gonna fulfill that, but um you're working remotely, I guess, and. Um, so I was going to. Throw out some ideas to hire a temp agency and possibly contract the one year till Dusty gets. Going um, uh, utility billing company. And give Dusty or whoever the interim clerk. Or whoever, whatever, whoever takes the clerk position if Dusty's interested still. Um, adhere to get organized and get going. But as for right now, we really need to slow down on our spending.
You know, we're. Um, I think, you know, hiring a temp for the front desk is a, is probably an excellent idea. Someone that can be trained on the utility billing, if they don't have the experience in that and provide reception to keep the office open. In addition, you know, if Ms. Koella decides that she is entrusted in staying on and that, that's something that the board wants and is entrusted in that. Um, you know, I think that. You know, she's expressed to me and obviously Dusty, I, if I'm incorrectly speaking or out of turn, please. Please speak up on your own behalf. I certainly don't want to put words into your mouth, but. It's my understanding that Ms. Koella is interested in the clerk. Treasure role or simply just like the clerk role, but not necessarily uh. The administrator functions of the job in that um. I think that the board has a lack of understanding of the amount of work involved in these three different positions. Um, and one person's not gonna cut it and two people need someone at the front desk to make this work. So. Not only for separation of duties, but from the sheer amount of work that um. Is being, is being undertaken in the day to day and in keeping all these projects moving. Um, the board needs to recognize that amount of work and hire appropriately for it. Putting Ms. Koella in there and just expecting her to do everything is unrealistic and it is setting her up for failure.
I completely agree, I just don't want to rush into hiring when.
She was still speaking, but it. Uh, yeah. We had, we had a pause in it, Angie.
Okay, well, I, I just, my main concern is, you know, setting people up for, for success. And putting one person in and expecting them to do everything. Uh, or even two people for that matter, a receptionist and a clerk, it's unrealistic to expect. Them to do everything. You do need the three people in there, uh, as outlined in my report for the separation, proper separation of duties. And also just to manage the, the sheer workload that the town is undertaking at this time. Uh, we did offer an alternative route uh temporarily to get you through, you know, the next month. Or the next few months uh. My, between myself, Ms. Koella and Ms. Distel, um, and it's, you know. If the board can come to a consensus on that, I could certainly, as outlined in my email. Come up with, you know, those contracts and complete scopes of work for the board's consideration on Thursday or Friday. And move forward in that direction, but that's really, the, you know, alternatively at this late hour. Um. You know, the board's been unable to organize around this, so. I'm offering an alternative. And it's up to you.
Well, we have a retired clerk who said she would be glad to volunteer and come in and help train too, who's worked in municipalities for.
Yes, Scott, we can mention the point. The point is that we have Carla here and, you know, and we have Angie and these ladies. And teach, help, and train Dusty to do the, the responsibilities of the clerk. Not somebody who has no background with this town, no background with how we operate. We already eliminated Melanie, so we don't have her on board anymore, but we do have Carla. And we do have Angie who has expertise in there, who can come in and read this proposal. And they're willing to spend some time and give Dusty the training for the town clerk responsibilities. Then if we want, then we can bring somebody to do what Jenny was doing in terms of working out front. While Carla receives the, uh, while Dustin receives the training to be the town clerk, not bringing in somebody who doesn't know. The background, doesn't know this town's business, has no background whatsoever. We've already got, you know, did you read my email, my stuff, I said, you look at the situation we're in, we're about to lose Carla. And is up, so what, what, who do we have? Who do we have that knows anything about this town, we're gonna have, it's got the door because we don't have one employee of this testing. And she's not been trained to do all of the things that we expect her, so she'll be carried out like that. So we have a proposal here to bring her up to speed and then we can move on and then hire other people. So, I mean, you know.
To me, Angie's already worked to get rid of Dusty for ninety days. So what is she gonna provide her in ninety, that she couldn't do in ninety days already?
Well, you know, you, when you look at what she had to do in ninety days, look at the questions you made, all the documents that you requested, you have to. So how many hours do you think that took away from the things that she could have been doing to train that person?
Can I weigh in here?
Yeah, I'm just saying that you haven't realized that there's only so much you could do, the most important thing.
I really can't hear what you're saying.
Is it possible for me to weigh in?
No, this is really a, a discussion for the board and the staff, this is not a discussion for the public. Um, the board needs to make this decision, it is up to.
You know, it's fine, it, you know, it's fine, but you're, you're, you're. You got your own agenda, that's all I want to say.
I really don't have my own agenda, I can't wait to get out of this town frankly. But in this state that you're in, you're in a very bad position. And I don't want to leave you in a bad position and I'm offering this to you frankly out of the goodness of my heart, like Carla did. In offering to do those projects for you for free.
So are you offering this for free?
I'm absolutely not offering this for free, I will not work for Colburn for free.
I, I'll ask just one more time, can I just state an opinion? It's fine if you say no.
No, this is for, this is for the board to discuss. Thank you.
Ms. Koella works twelve to twenty hours a week, more along the lines of twelve up until just the last couple of weeks. There has not been the time with the workload to be able to train her, uh, we need someone at the front desk. And Carla and I are willing to provide the training remotely um onsite as absolutely needed, but mostly remotely. Um. You know, uh, this is really up to the board.
I'd rather see us hire a temporary front desk person and let us get our feet on the ground and see how it goes. And. Is what I, is the direction I'd rather see us go than spending a hundred dollars an hour, a hundred fifteen dollars an hour and. Our, our income, our budgetary. Goal for twenty twenty-five has already been exceeded. So I would like to suggest that we have a work session and a board meeting. Um, maybe Tuesday morning to discuss hiring a temporary. Contracting with a um. Temporary staffing agency is my suggestion.
To do what level of professional work, receptionist?
Yes.
Okay, so and then who's gonna do the professional level work of the administrator and the clerk?
Uh, well, Dusty can do the clerk and um. We can move forward on the admin. After a little bit, but it's not an emergency, by law, by state statutes, we have to have a clerk and a treasurer. And um, as Carlos, Carlos staying on to do the grant work. And that's really what the management that needs to be done right now.
With all due respect, the other daily requirements that need done are your accounts payable, your contractors payroll, you have to pay employees next week. Um, and doing your banks, you can collect payments at the desk, they have to get to the bank. Um, and, and there are multitude of functions that underlie and support that. I, I share a similar opinion, I mean, this has been really hard and I'm ready to leave. I do not want to be dusty in this whole world situation. About it today, and I know she is frightened of being, I mean, I, I will poison her mouth. She does not want to be left with that much responsibility.
Right.
Because if you don't pay your employees your worth, the law, and she doesn't know how to do better.
I understand that.
So there are some very specific requirements over the next month. That again, we have not been able to address because she's out at the front answering the phones and taking utility payments. And she needs administrative support and then she needs the opportunity to step back so that she can pick up those functions. So that you can pay your.
Right.
And I don't know any other solution to that.
Well, there's a lot of contracting agencies that can contract, we can contract payroll and billing through.
In the long term, yes, and over in a month, you certainly can. Next week is your challenge. The following week is your challenge. Outsourcing utility billing, yes, you can absolutely do that. That is however a process. You don't just snap your fingers and outsource billing. You're going to have to transfer funds, you're gonna have to set up things. Dusty can do that and Dusty has time. But Dusty doesn't have time in her current environment. So all of these things that are very possible and very dual over time, they won't happen next week. And again, we're not wanting to feather our nest. Or we both have other professional opportunities that we are exploring. But we are trying to support this town. We're trying to support the gentleman across the street. We are trying to keep you out of legal trouble because again, if you don't pay payroll next week, you're breaking the law. And that is all we are attempting to do. But if, but if you, I mean, yeah, I'm.
It is completely unrealistic for this board to expect Ms. Distel. To do what you're asking her to do at this juncture.
And Angie wants to charge a hundred dollars an hour and you want to charge a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to look into possibly, again, having a work session and a special meeting and look into a payroll. A third party, even if we have to contact them immediately.
It doesn't happen immediately. That is a very extensive transition.
A hundred dollars an hour and a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour is a lot, baby.
So was the recall. You didn't point them out, have. That cost us paying over ten thousand dollars.
Did you want me to tell them no?
You know what?
Do you want me to tell them no?
Yeah.
The constituents have the legal right to finally a recall. Did you want the board to stand up and say no?
I want, what I want the board is to support Dusty. They need to support those that are willing to train her, not bring somebody in, you know, I, I know a person that. Uh, hired an agency, that person coming in to hire an agency is not gonna have the expertise that we have here right now, right now. I don't think it's over discussed, thank you.
But they're, they're not the only people again, and the world that knows how to do these jobs.
And again, we are not suggesting we are, we are saying in the next one month. We are your best opportunity to assist Dusty in this move transition. But if you want to do it, why don't we just say that? Let's just. Let's just address the elephant in the room. If you want to do it, then those are two options, I think. Either we do it or you do it. I mean.
I'm sorry, Carla, but I want your policy and I wanted to do it.
Well, you just essentially said you do that exactly. Okay.
For sixteen different sides.
So you're not interested in doing this, so we would.
I, I thought it wasn't up for public opinion.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's where, uh.
Why is the exception being made for one person there if it's not up for public opinion?
And that is correct. I should not, uh, again, it's, it's up to the board. We have offered a whistle to help support.
What, what, what kind of hours do you think it's gonna take for you? To, to be available and, I mean, even at a hundred and whatever hour.
I can do payroll now. It'll take longer to teach, but I can do it, so.
Can you add a question?
Sure.
I mean, you didn't do it. Can you change the term, but that's managed. Why haven't we have some of the upcoming side stuff?
Cause you haven't authorized us to hire anybody but us.
Yeah, that's, that's part, part of this, because of the recall and the time, we, we need something. I'm trying to make the best statements from the town, but when you're sitting here, you're telling me. You've been here for ninety, well, a lot of time, but I'm saying trying to go through this transition. And we only have one person trained to get your talent, but we need three. And why haven't we got other two people?
Because when Ms., when Angie is hired. And, and I will let Angie speak to this because there was a plan and that plan has not been followed. Has, has, has not come to fruition to hire additional people that would have been trained in this ninety days that didn't happen, but all the Angie.
Okay, I, I was having a really hard time hearing trust, trustee Stolly. Um, because of the microphones, I believe, but something about.
The question was, is why haven't we hired anybody else in the last ninety days?
Oh, that's, that's pretty straightforward. You know, I discussed this with the mayor on the phone a couple of days ago. Um, and, you know. He basically, he apologized for wasting my professional time the last three months. I couldn't get the board to. To coordinate a time to sit down together and create a strategic plan. I couldn't get the board to coordinate a time to have a retreat. Which we needed to create a strategic plan for our ninety day. You know, plan. Um, I couldn't get the board to participate in a simple questionnaire. To let me know what their ideal candidate would be for, uh, the town administrator role, for the town clerk role. Um, you know, you know, to date. Two trustees or two or three trustees participated in that, uh, via email. We were not able to get the board to sit down and have a discussion about the organizational structure. And I got emails from, uh, one of the trustees saying, I don't want to participate in this questionnaire because I don't want a town administrator. I can't go out and post a position for a town administrator. Contact people in my professional network, have them come to an interview and then have the board arguing in public in front of applicants. About what, what position, they don't even want that position that they're hi, being hired for. Throwing a fit in front of applicants. I can't have that. It's unethical. The board needs to get it together.
Angie was requested to work to hire people. That didn't, and, and that's why we haven't hired anybody. She didn't have the authority to hire. She would have had to bring it back to the board and that didn't happen. So nobody was able to be hired in this three month period.
Why are you sitting here blaming new board members and we're just come on board?
We want you to understand the gravity of the situation that you are in. We want you to understand the gravity of the situation you're in.
Right. So you say it takes an hour to do, um, payroll. Um, how, how, how many hours a week do you think that you're gonna need as your consulting fee to? When we say we go ahead and authorize the help, I, I mean, the higher. If we have a special meeting, whatever, to hire, we've got to do payroll, like you say, it's illegal. Um, yeah, we, we need to be as supportive as we can to Dusty because we do want her to stay as. Clerk and reporter, that's the position that she wants to pursue, you know, she doesn't want to administer, that's exactly what. I don't want to put anything on her that she doesn't want, but we support, as supportive as we can, so.
Well, I can identify, we can work together, identify specific tasks, but I don't believe until. You are able to get her some front office assistance to where she has time to concentrate and train. There should be a. That, I mean, it's too disrupted, it's too interrupted. So in a very, very short term, it would probably be just doing the work and. You know, if, if she could watch, observe, learn, all explain. Um, we could work at a very short term basis, but I'm not, I'm not gonna come back here and keep arguing for this, you know.
No, the only thing I would. Is why haven't we hired for the front desk? Well, I understand that, but let's make. And that's Angie.
We couldn't do it.
So now moving forward, what can we do to help to get to that position? What do we need to do as a board?
Well, you need to answer that, Dusty. What do you feel you need to move forward? I think, I don't, I don't want to speak for you.
I mean, I need the training, um. Thing is, Port and I have been able to do the training with pilots.
I mean, but I guess what I'm asking is, you, how much help do you need?
I think that's a better question for Carla.
Wouldn't know because I haven't had that chance.
Well, I would suggest you need a front desk administrative support to work however many hours you want town hall open. If you don't have somebody supporting her answering phones and taking payments. She will never be anything but answering phones and taking payments. So I think their first definition is how many hours you want town hall and, and how many hours is Dusty available? She also has other commitments as well. So you, you need to agree that town hall will be open X hours a day, these days a week. And you need, I believe, to hire administrative support for that amount of time. Once you've got that, then I think you can put together a training plan and start talking about what that looks like.
But we, we can't make a motion tonight because it's not on the agenda, but how can we have an emergency meeting to make, to. To, to get that agenda and get that done as quickly as possible.
You, I mean, you can call it and if, if.
I mean, without.
Can we call it for Tuesday? At like ten?
Today is.
If you're gonna schedule a meeting, we just have to deal within a realistic timeframe to be able to have the contracts and the scope of work prepared. So that the board can truly make a decision on, on what they want to do here.
I think the issue with waiting until Tuesday and I'll fairness though is Dusty's contract expires on the eleventh.
So do we have an executive session or do we, do we have a special meeting on Thursday? How, how soon do you? Think we should have a, a meeting? I mean, do you think we should call, we, we can't do it tomorrow because we don't have twenty four hours?
It would be Thursday or Friday.
Do we do it Thursday?
If, if Dusty can schedule it, um, she'll still be working here on Thursday, so, um, um. So yes, I think then you would consider extending her contract. Um, and, and negotiating with her on that and then giving her authorization to hire front desk perception. And I think you need to, as part of that discussion, decide how many hours you want town hall open. You know, if, we're, you know, we certainly understand there is a cost for town, there will be a one to one cost for having town. I think, um, so you need to decide how many hours you want town hall open, what days you want town hall open, and then. Give her authorization to hire somebody and then, then you could figure out your next staff cut down.
Are we open to have, have a special meeting on Thursday?
Friday.
Friday, not available Thursday. Friday? What time is best for Dusty?
Are you coming Friday?
Yes, for me and I.
Me, me too.
I'm unavailable in the afternoon. Are you leaving at noon or one?
I can stay with Mrs.
Gary? Friday?
I'm available at one.
What, what time party are you available? Well, we were gonna leave town Thursday, we go Thursday, Friday, but. If you want, if you want to meet all, all later agents to.
Ken, is there any way we can have a work session first? But it doesn't really matter because we have to have everything on the agenda.
You're, you're out on the president. Well, we can, we can still have a court, we can, we can still have a quorum. And we can still authorize, uh, we can work out with Dusty and we can still authorize her to hire. Help for the front desk, um. So.
And I'm not opposed to contracting with one or the other, but I don't think we need both.
Okay.
So could it suit for the agenda items? Can it be the discussion and direction for front desk temporary service? Discussion, oh, do you need a minute?
Here, I'll go back and listen to the report.
Okay, discussion and direction for town hall hours. Discussion and direction for possibly hiring a third party for utility billing. And. Discussion and direction on possibly contracting a payroll. Third party company, at least getting bid proposals out to see what we're talking about.
Okay, but.
The price.
In that, do we want to discuss? What you say?
And discussion direction for keeping Carla to train to do the, to do the billing. Contract to do the billing and payroll.
Two accounts payroll, payroll and banking, but I've no longer been banking. I mean, you've taken me off the bank, so that, that was some Dusty have to do.
Okay, discussion and direction to contract distill financing?
Just consulting.
Consulting for, um, accounts, payroll, banking?
For finance, banking, support.
What Carla says.
Yeah. And that's the first step. That, that is, that is stanching the lead, but I think going back to Angie's point. You really do need to step back and, and think strategically about. And, and some of these things like outsourcing these functions, I don't know that you necessarily want to consider that until you decide what that staffing was. Because the reason why, for instance, you know, when you have a front desk person, having them to build utility billing makes a lot of sense. There's some complexity with payroll. I love it, moving it to book books and there were some challenges, so. There is just a lot to consider that it's not just enough, very few things are turnkey.
I understand.
Um, so I think those discussions are maybe a little premature and for her to get pricing on it is, is again, another thing. The rest starts stacking on plate. She needs, she needs first and foremost to find her administrative support. I, I will. So that she can then start thinking about other things.
Can we also have discussion and direction to extending your interim clerk? And treasurer contract. Probably sixty or ninety days.
And then I do think you will need to keep an idea of what that would, whatever that improvement looks like. And organizational and structural, you know, function. And I, I do thank you, I only want to talk to Angie again about that, again, once.
I really, I really urge you to read the report that I sent today via email to everyone. As well as that brief overview email. Um, the report, I think, lays the staffing issues out pretty well. And if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me because we do need, you, this, the board needs to address this immediately. Uh, the path that you're on, it's not a great one and you could. I just recommend that you strongly read that before we have our work session discussion. Um, I don't have, I don't feel like I have direction from the board other than. You know, Jessica's opinion on what needs to happen and then, uh, extending Dusty's contract. Hiring someone from a temp agency potentially to work the front desk and be trained on utility billing. Um, but I do think that the piece, in addition to the finance stuff that Dusty's gonna need from. Someone with my level of expertise, um, has not been addressed in this discussion. And I'd like to get some direction from the board as to whether or not, um, you're gonna provide that support for Dusty. And I really think that if you don't, you're setting her up for failure. And I really think that if you don't, you're setting her up for failure.
Those types of things are coordinating with the contractors, you know, the water line, the school, um. I think those are, you know, some immediate needs. Um, Angie is spending all day, every day answering questions about. Different projects that are going on, different meetings responding to, um. Requests from other agencies and things like that. So, and again, that is something if Dusty is spending her time. You know, training and learning finance stuff, she's not going to have necessarily the time to pick up those. Plus there, there's a learning curve on all of those projects. And again. We're. We want to do what we can to support us. We've been, I mean, I, I have enjoyed working with her so much and I do not want to.
We don't wanna see you guys fail.
We don't wanna see the town.
We don't either.
That's the only reason we're offering this alternative. We don't wanna see you fail.
So if we have a, a special meeting on Friday at one P M, we have a quorum, um. And we can, we can, from now till then, we can read the status, the status report, your email and the status report, we'll study that. And then, um. What's that? Right. Um, for staffing and. Basically, uh. Bringing somebody into, yeah, to hire or to, to answer the phones and and take the money and.
Okay, so we got a meeting going. Are we? Are we gonna keep going? Well, I mean, everybody's gonna be here on Friday. Are we gonna go to? The incident report or are we out of?
The next agenda item?
Yeah. Cause we're still on staff updates, right?
And those are just typically, if you have questions, you ask us. There's not presentation money.
Those reports speak for themselves. Those reports just speak for themselves.
As far as the K O gel, K L J report goes, where is this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was rewarded to us? For small community grant for the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that will allow for additional water system improvements?
So, spent about seventy five thousand on constructing the pump. The remaining funds are budgeted in twenty twenty five in capital grants in the water fund. Whether or not you have, there are water. And we will leave them there.
So for, like for the point of diversion and.
So, yes, and so I, there is roughly, I believe, and. I'm trying to drag these numbers out of my brain. I believe there's two hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Right now, the grant is to reroute the Clearwell roof. And then I believe there's forty thousand dollars more or less. And again, please understand it's almost eleven o'clock and. You know, it's not at the top of my brain, but there's about forty thousand dollars she fencing around the tank up there for, for security purposes. And some fencing around the springs. So I believe that is in fund fifty one. Not in this one, it's gonna be in your report that is sideways. Yeah. Believe it is on. Sorry, it's, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the budget. Um, and so that is for the Clearwell roof and the fence. Now, there is in that proposal an option, you know, to do some different stuff and picking up the diversion. And so that is where those proposals fund would kind of. So, is that, does that answer the question room?
So this says admin grant expenditures budget. Fifty nine thousand?
No, go to page two of four. And then at the bottom it says water fund. And then it says revenues and then it says expenditures. It says water payroll, water, water cap grant. So that is the twenty twenty five portion of that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You'll also see there's a comparable one eighty and as a revenue, that's why it's a grant. So there's a revenue and an expense. And then the other water capital is the three thirty valves.
Like the one that's going at the clinic?
Yes.
It's been approved and.
Right.
We're moving forward.
Right. That's what those funds are. And, you know, I.
Has there been any, has there been any bids put out for the roof or replacement of?
No, because again, we wanted you to be able to consider that alternative. Which might mean that you would, you would not reroute it in the same way as if it were fresh. Because if you used it as a spilling basin for raw water. And diverted the Hoosier there, you wouldn't necessarily have the same caliber roof. And so that's part of what that proposal includes. And then the Hoosier proposal also includes. Reconfiguring, it includes basically abandoning the line from the headgate. And diverting the water closer to the water treatment. And then you could just switch it in, but in order to provide some storage. Of raw water. You could do it. So we have not gotten bids, cause we wanted to come back to you and see. What options you wanted to pursue. But we have not done over bids, no.
Right, I, I'm kinda like the editorial, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it. Long term and.
Sure.
Do it right and not a temporary situation for.
Sure. And the reason why initially it was a Clearwell roof was to take it off. I mean, there, I can explain all that. And it's eleven o'clock and I'm sure nobody wants to go through that, but that is where those funds are. So, and and there is a reason that in the parks, yes, it's a placeholder. I mean, I could, you know. Go through and, and I need to address those questions. It's possible something that I, I don't tend to do, but I do. There are answers to your question.
Oh, that's what I asked him.
No, but I'm not your plain answer after tomorrow. So. So that's kinda where we, we stand. So, um. But I will be more than happy to help Dusty research and answer those questions, again, as time permits. So, but that was the answer to that one specific question of where is that water? C D P H water grant is right there. So.
Thank you.
We didn't do the basic counting.
You can read it if you want.
Yes, sorry, of course. I mean, did the sheriff have a report for us or is that just? That's in the, okay. I mean, it. So I completely understand. Trust me. Okay. So twenty three trust the informational items for future agenda, I've got any meetings to be determined by the board. Any staff hired? Or hired by the board? So, we have future agenda requests. Which we've got over Optimus Communications, possibly May twentieth. Website remediation proposal, compliance.
I just don't think we should have a special meeting on May twentieth.
Okay.
I think all that can wait till June. Although I did read up about this, maybe can we discuss, um? Can you see if this, um? Taylor Kelly Lotman with Bluebird Ranching Consulting is possibly um available? For Friday? Because I did read up on this, it's a house bill. It was, they required this update to be done by all the webs. The municipality's websites. To be A D A compliant. And the deadline was last July, you never heard about it, and there's a second house bill that they put in place to give an extension. Till this July, so it's probably very important that this gets rolling.
So is Pamela Lotman, is she Bluebird or is she?
Oh, sorry. Cobra Lee, Cobra Lee Web Creations. You're right.
Chris Cobra Lee.
Yeah, if you could, if we could get ahold of her and see if she's, um, available to do the. Her presentation, cause that's something we do need to get with the deadlines July.
Also wanna stress the importance of the board not taking on too many projects at once when you have so much else. That's already happening and you have no staff to support any of it at the current time and date. That's all I wanna say.
That's a house bill that's due in July and I don't know how long it takes for them to do it. To get us up to speed on them.
I, I can't speak to the specifics of how long it would take to implement compliance on that. But I, I am very familiar with that legislation, um. First off, I, it's my understanding that the town, um, goes through, uh, SIPA, which is the state's. Um, internet portal for, um, for its website services, a, a number of other municipalities do. Um, and it's my understanding that some, but not all of the. Compliance with the new standards should be handled by. Sort of the, the state side of things with regard to the town's, um, website. There are some other elements. That will need to be updated and it's certainly something that you should have on, on the board's radar. I, I, I will know the, um, with the deadline approaching later this year. Um, there are some quick steps that you can take and I'd be, I'd be happy to, um. Give a more detailed report to staff or, 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 um, or write a short memo before. The next meeting addressing this, but the, the main compliance that's required with this or. The, the town could be sued. By someone claiming that the ta- the website is not A D A accessible under the new laws and that's really what the deadline in July is about. Um, that said, there are some very, very basic steps that you can take to, uh. Implement accessibility and I'm sure the woman who's going to present can, can address some of that, but. I, just echoing Angie's concern, I think this is, this is definitely something the board should have on its radar, but. I, 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 I still think Angie's correct that you don't wanna overload with too many projects.
Okay, with that being said, I would ask that all the future agenda requests being moved into the first meeting in June. I don't know what the other board members think.
Absolutely.
What's your opinion or how you feel? I don't want you to be overloaded.
Are you aware of anything that needs to happen before May twentieth or on May twentieth? And I, I'm guessing at this point, you don't know, I mean. We can move those items forward and then if something's on the. Call me.
I remember twenty fourth public correspondence, a statement read by former trustee till the end. That was sent out in our board package, so.
I, I'd like that to be properly labeled, that it was a statement read by former trustee. It has no. Yeah.
I submit public correspondence as it's sent to me, so I don't, I, I don't edit public correspondence.
So at this point, we have. We're on for. A special meeting Friday, one P M. And you pretty much got the agenda. Everyone was. Discuss, right? Are you well off the recording?
Yes, I. I've got a little notice here. I can only double check that if you're recording.
Okay, Mr. America, can you come and find stuff tomorrow, all of his stuff?
I can sign it tomorrow, I said whenever you want me to sign it.
Tomorrow would be great.
I will do that. What time does you like me to be here? Eleven, okay? Okay.
We'll call ourselves together, but, but.
If I have to wait, I'll wait.
Yeah, we, so eleven should be fine. Yeah.
No, I mean, I can come in at eleven and if, if I need to wait a little bit and. You got forty five minutes.
Will you stay in a hotel tonight?
A certain, yes, we are there.